Good evening, thank you for joining us. We will get our meeting called to order. Madam Secretary, please take role.
Yes, all board members are present and we have a quorum.
Wonderful. Next, we'll go to the Pledge of Allegiance. And tonight, we have Brian Halverson from Troop 112. He's working on his Citizenship in the Community Merit Badge. And he's going to lead us in the pledge. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Brian. Next, we have our special presentations. And for that, we turn to Dr. Wall.
Thank you, Leila. We have two very esteemed Carmel High School graduates recognized by the state of Indiana as Ms. and Mr. Indiana Science. They can't be in attendance this evening because Audit is attending Harvard University and Helena is attending MIT. So they're closer to each other than they are to us right now, obviously. And we are so proud of them. Audit Chandra, 2015 Mr. Science, graduated from Carmel High School last year, where he was named AP Scholar, Indiana Academic All-Star, U.S. National Chemistry Olympiad National Finalist, Intel ISEF International Finalist. Was also selected to the Carmel Education Foundation Board and served as a president of the Science Olympiad for Carmel High School. We're very proud of him and wish him all the best at Harvard. And Helena Ma, 2015 Ms. Science, graduated from Carmel High School last year, where she was National AP Scholar, National Merit Scholarship Finalist, Presidential Scholar/Semifinalist. She also participated in the Science Bowl, Math Bowl, Physics Bowl, Chemistry Olympiad, and Science Olympiad. We're very proud of Helena at MIT and we wish her all the best. We'll send her, both of them, a certificate of accommodation and congratulation on behalf of the Board.
Wow, that is very impressive, Dr. Wall. Thank you for sharing that with us.
Absolutely.
Moving right along, we have our district update, which is our spotlight on excellence, highlighting some of the really wonderful things we do within the district to celebrate our students. And with that, we have our Carmel Youth Assistance Program, Ms. Maggie Figgy. Please join us at the podium, Maggie.
As Maggie comes to the podium, the genesis of this program, Judge Nation approached me last year with the notion and talking about other communities in Hamilton County that had success with this program. I was very interested on behalf of Carmel Clay Schools. And it came to fruition this fall, where I'm going to segue to Maggie, where she can fill in the blanks. And Maggie was with us at Creekside as a Student Services Coordinator. And we're so happy that she's still with us and having a broader impact on the community of Carmel.
Thank you. Yes, so as Dr. Wall said, I was a Student Services Coordinator for the last six years at Creekside Middle School, which it's fun to see Brian here because Brian is a Creekside student. So that's kind of not on purpose, but fun. And I appreciate you having me back because I was remembering the last time I was at a board meeting was when Creekside got our Blue Ribbon Award. And they invited staff to come. And Dr. Wall, there were so many of us here, he had everybody line up along the wall. But he said, you know, "Some of you can go up towards the front." And so me, following directions, because that's how I am, I went up towards the front and nobody followed me. And so I get up here and I turn around and there's a huge crowd of people here that night. And I'm the only one standing right here. And I thought, well, this is just perfect. So anyway, I appreciate you having me back. As Dr. Wall said, I want to kind of give a little bit of the history tonight of youth assistance, and I'll try to do it really quickly. Youth Assistance was piloted by Westfield in 2009. Started or kind of brought to Hamilton County as a joint effort between the court system, Judge Nation. And it was piloted in Westfield. At that time, Mayor Andy Cook was a big proponent of having a prevention-based youth service. So that is why they piloted there. I can't tell you how important it is for each community to have a broad network of support from the get-go. And Carmel's done an amazing job of that. I am an employee of Hamilton County Courts. I'm assigned to Carmel. When I started this job, July 20th, the school system already had, you know, they've already been meeting to talk about the program. They had given me office space and said, you know, "Here's a laptop so you can kind of get up and moving." So it was only because of the school system that I was a, you know, semi-functional office from day one. So that having their support and then as well as the city of Carmel that's come on board, and they are currently the ones that are paying my salary. So without that, with all three entities really being totally vested in this, it wouldn't be a program. Like I said, it was piloted in Westfield. Their overarching goal is for, to intervene early in a child's life so that we are not sending them down a trajectory where they're going to end up in Judge Nation's court system when they are 15, 16-years-old. I think that's where his passion comes from. He saw a lot of young children getting involved in the juveniles justice system and felt like if we had just got, you know, had some supports put in place early in their life, you know, they would be staying in school. They would be, you know, kind of creating the makeup to be a better citizen versus having them involved in our, in the juvenile system. So that's where his passion came from. The program focuses on connecting families and children to the resources that are already available in Hamilton County. So we are not trying to reproduce a resource that's already available or services that are already out there. What my goal is, is to come alongside families and help them navigate that system and get them plugged into the supports that they need to be plugged into. So as Dr. Wall stated, we officially got the program in Carmel up and running in July 2015. And now it's a county-wide program. Okay. What I feel like makes Carmel Youth Assistance or CEAP different from other services that are out there is that we're preventative in nature. So we want to get involved early. We want to get a child involved in some pro-social activities. We want to look at the family base as a whole and figure out what supports are needed to really stabilize that system versus reactive. And we have a lot of great programs, a lot of great reactive programs in our community prevail and things like that, CPS. But those are programs where something has to occur. A bad situation has to occur for them to intervene. So we want to intervene before that happens. The services are free and voluntary. So when a family is referred to me, and I'll kind of talk about that really briefly in a minute. But when a family is referred to me, they're under no obligation to take part in our services. And then the services working with me is also free. It provides a really neat continuation and coordination of services. So I can be that contact person for multiple agencies that might be involved in a child's life. Also, we service children ages 3 to 17. So it's never our goal, obviously, for a child to be on the service that long. But it's kind of neat that I could work with a child for an extended period of time if that family needed the services. Kind of as I already mentioned, we don't have criteria for acceptance. So there's not like an income level that a family has to meet to be able to utilize our services. So those are some of the things. And then also, in addition to that, something that makes us really unique is Judge Nation advocated for us and got a law passed through state legislature. I think he started working in it, on it in July 2010. And I think it passed through in 2011. But what that piece of law does is it identifies and defines my role. And my role is called early intervention advocate. So it gives a definition to that. It says that we cannot be subpoenaed or testify in court, which helps our relationship with families sometimes. Kind of takes that factor out if families are worried about that. And but the most important thing that it does is that it allows me to receive information from any group that's working with that child. So I can get information from the schools and I could give information to the schools. I could exchange information with CPS, with the police department, with a child's physician, with a child's therapist, all those different parties I could bring to the table together without having to have releases of information. And not, so that barrier is kind of eliminated, which is pretty awesome. As I said, we can serve children ages 3 to 17. Children are referred for a variety of reasons. As I kind of mentioned before, it is any child that we might identify as at-risk. So that could be at-risk because they're, you know, constantly being disciplined at school. Maybe they were suspended or they're expelled. Truancy issues. Maybe there's been a huge life change at home, those kinds of things. Might kind of set up a red flag for somebody and they might refer that child. Three quick easy steps, the referrals made to the program. We meet with the family to create an intervention plan and goals, and we implement that plan. This is, these are kind of your five referral sources. In the other communities that have been up and running for a little bit longer, about 80% of the referrals come from the schools. So again, having that great relationship is really important. And they have a good communication system back and forth because of that law. So the school's prosecutor's office, if a child comes across their desk who maybe just committed a really minor offense or is a first-time offender, they might say, let's try, you know, you getting involved in youth assistance prior to getting you involved in the juvenile justice system. The police department, I put individual families up there, but really they'd have to go through the school system and other community agencies. So as I said, our first step is to, once we get referrals, to meet with families, do an assessment, figure out what their needs are, their most immediate needs, and formulate goals and a case plan. And these are examples, which you can see in the brochures that I put up there, of some of the referrals that we can make. So one of the first things we always try to do is get a child involved in some pro-social activity where there's going to be positive adults in their life if they're not already involved. So that could be through Carmel Dads Club. That could be in music or art or Boys and Girls Scouts, anything like that. But trying to get more people involved in them, with them that are positive role models. Mental health referrals, financial assistance. You can look through your brochure and kind of see all the different referrals we can make. Another great thing is we could take on a child whose family is just in total disarray and they have a lot of needs. Or, and I ran into this a lot at Creekside, I might have a child who I just felt like needed a mentor. And maybe the parents just, you know, are working a lot or they have different work schedules. And that child needs, just needs a little bit of extra support in their life. And so just that one service I could provide, which is neat. And these are just some of our community partners already. Like I said, Carmel Clay Schools, City of Carmel, Hamilton County Juvenile Courts. Legacy Fund has given us a two-year program, or grant, to use some of that money towards our programming for youth. And so that's, we appreciate that from them. And that's it. And I know I probably don't have time for questions because I already went over my time. But you have my contact information if you have any interest or questions that you want to follow up on.
Well, thank you, Maggie. And yes, we will entertain questions, so we will have, we have time.
Okay.
So, do we have any specific questions at this point? Yes, Pam, go ahead.
Yes. How does a member of a school contact you? Do they have to go through the principal? Does the teacher just contact you on their own? What channels do they have to go through?
Yeah, so I just recently met with Dr. Wall and Tammy Thornberry to kind of discuss a rollout plan for how to get out into the schools. So probably what we'll do is have one contact source in the school system. And it more than likely would be the Student Services Coordinator or Social Worker. In some schools, there's two, so maybe two sources. Or School Resource Officers. And there isn't really easy, I'm actually meeting with the social workers and I've already met with the Resource Officers to discuss the referral process in length. But there's just a referral form on our website that you could, that they log into and fill out a form. And then I get an email that's generated from that.
One more question. And once you have met with a student and you have done the case review, when do you take that to the school? And who do you contact at the school? Do you have meetings with a teacher, with an administrator, or just with the Student Services Coordinator?
I think in that case, I think it's always going to depend on the student's case. So for example, you know, if a child was brought to the social worker's attention or a counselor's attention from a teacher and the, you know, the child's academics are maybe the main concern, then we would continue to have teachers involved in that process. And like I said, the really neat thing about that law is that I can bring all those people to a table and not have to worry about legal issues involved, talking back and forth. So I can't, I will say that that law doesn't really come into place for me until a family signs the consent for services. So after I would do an intake with a family and they would sign consent for services, that's when I could bring everybody to, together to kind of discuss that situation. And the most important part about that is it's so important to get the whole picture of what's really going on with that child from an academic standpoint, from a social and emotional standpoint, from the family, you know, that kind of thing. So before we would get too far into a plan or implementation, really having an accurate picture of what's going on.
Maggie.
Mm-hmm.
Couple of things that we're working on. Maggie and Tammy Thornberry are going to be researching some early intervention screening tools for the school corporation, for the district. Because referral is the mechanism now, which is very important. And we want that to be part of the process going forward. But also a screening mechanism that allows all of us to determine when early intervention needs to take place, what are the warning signs, so to speak. Also Maggie is housed in CLC, right across from the high school. And great location for the city and for a school corporation. And also, the Carmel Youth Assistance will have a board, establish a 501-3C, so it's self-funded, it's self-funding. We've contributed as far as space and equipment. The city has contributed to start Maggie out with salary. Legacy Fund has contributed to give it a jumpstart. But the board then will create, it'll be a not-for-profit board that creates a sustaining revenue for the program. That's the long-term. Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? Fantastic. Thank you so much, Maggie.
No problem.
Wonderful. Seeing that we do not have anybody wishing to speak for public participation, we'll move along to consent. Maggie, a motion to approve consent?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great.
I think we, the system I just told froze. So we've got hard copies. Don't we?
I have, yes.
Dana, could you get hard copies of the agenda for the agreement between? You have the agenda? No, then the write-up's in there.
Yeah. Anybody out here need a agenda?
She's going to get one. For this, the report items, we got the first one is the Public Library in Carmel Clay Schools. Anything else you need?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, then, moving right along, we have reports. So I will turn to Roger McMichael.
We're good now. Okay. This is a report, we're not asking for action this evening, but this includes a proposal for an agreement between the Carmel Clay School Board and the Carmel Clay Public Library regarding real estate. In 1996, the school corporation sold what we thought was five acres of property where the library is now located. But in the course of transferring the deed with that property, six acres was transferred. And the sixth acre, if you were to, and I'm sure you're familiar with the property generally, the sixth acre goes from the south line of what appears to be the library property, the parking lot and so forth, and then goes south into the parking lot, basically, of Carmel Elementary School. So in the course of replacing the sign, actually, for the elementary school and is when we discovered that, you know, this. And so, and about that time, the library had requested that they would be able to put an access point from their parking lot into what we assumed was the school parking lot so that their patrons could exit and go out our driveway. And we were fine with that and they had, so they were making plans to do that. We were making plans to replace our sign. And in the course of all that, we discovered that what we thought was school property had been deeded over to the library. So essentially with that background, then, this action would convert the title to the property, or deed the title to that one acre of property back to the school corporation. On the other hand, we would also provide an easement to the library. Then for, so that they would have access out of their parking lot, which has been going on for a number of years now. And we have no problem with that either. And then there's a provision to provide that should the school district ever sell the property that Carmel Elementary is located on or any portion of that, that, or at least relatively this one acre, that the library would have first rights of refusal if they wanted to buy that property. And then I think we're going to further adjust the agreement to essentially provide the same thing should the library ever choose to sell, you know, the property that the library's on. That would seem hard to imagine at this point, but, you know, 50 years from now, who knows? So that's essentially this report and this information. David Day is in attendance this evening. He, of course, worked with the legal, the attorney for the library. And between the two of them, they've drafted this language and these various documents to, that would result in that transfer of that property.
I gave you very rough draft of the name next. I got some comments from you personally, which I appreciate it. And this will be working with incorporating and adopting the suggestions. It's been a long process, but I think we would win the approval. And I agree with you, we had a fund agreement to approve it.
So taking action at our next workshop or our next business meeting?
Regular meeting.
Perfect. Okay, September, thank you. Or do we have any specific questions we'd like to address at this time? Kathy?
So the way I understand this is really nothing changes except legally.
Right, behind the scenes. Well, that's really correct because...
We're trying to read the legal documents that implies.
What practice?
Exactly.
Any other questions? Great, thank you very much for being here, David, and the entire library board and the new executive director to library. Thank you for joining us. Next, we have our presentation of the 2016 budgets. Mr. McMichael.
Go ahead.
Enjoy without the website.
I'm going to press on the budget.
Thank you, David.
Now I think I'm ready. Okay, well, let me make a couple preliminary comments. First, in your board packet in the pink folder, you have a hard copy of this PowerPoint. You also have a hard copy of the draft budget. And that's really budget, that includes all six funds. And included in that, there is an email to this effect. But in the course of putting this together, we determined that the information relative to the Capital Projects Fund was, when that was sent to you electronically, a draft of that was sent that we start with from last year's budget. And then we build that program from there. So the final draft is now included in your packet. And then there are two, so that's under the yellow tab. And then there's two blue tabs. And both of those documents are changed as a result of the CPF. Because summary information from the CPF is included on those two state forms. And so they're now corrected as well. And yes, it is. And because what you originally received wouldn't have made any sense to you at all. And in fact, Pam pointed out, I add a few questions on that that I go, this isn't right. So we got that corrected. Okay, with that, then, our budget is actually made up of six funds. Sometimes when we talk about the budget, people are really referring to our general fund budget. But actually, there are six different funds, which you can see here. The general fund and the referendum fund were one of relatively few districts in the state that also have a referendum fund, which you're quite familiar with. Both of those funds, we really combined them for purposes of operation. They have to be kept separate from a bookkeeping standpoint. But when, but operationally, both funds are used for the same purposes. So I oftentimes, and including tonight, will present them kind of together so that you can see the total amount of operating funds that we have available. Then the transportation fund, which is, as the name implies, used for transportation expenses. The bus replacement fund is a second fund that's used only to purchase buses. That service fund to repay our debt. And then the Capital Projects Fund. So I'll start with the general fund. Under revenue, this fund's pretty straightforward under revenue these days because, as you know, the general fund now is funded from state resources as opposed to state and local property taxes. So based on the enrollment, it's a bit of a complicated form. But once you plug in the enrollment, it kind of fills in the blanks. And so at the moment, when this was put together, it's being based on an ADM decrease of 54 students in 2015-16. And also then assumes an additional 2% funding in '16-17. Now, having said that, that's a projection. So the one that will really count is when we take the ADM count in September. And so, but we'll also take another one in February, which will have an impact. So there's now two different count dates, the so-called official account dates that directly affect the funding. What complicates our general fund a little bit these days is that the funding at the state level and the formula and so forth is based on a fiscal year from July 1 to June 30. But the budget process continues to be on a calendar year. And so the funding now no longer lines up with the budget itself. And so that complicates things a bit because we're operating in two different years on the revenue side. On the referendum, the funding here is an assumption based on an increase of $244,000. Last year, that was a little over $400,000. So we're hopeful that that number is a conservative estimate on the part of the county and that it will go up. But at the moment, I'm using just the information that I received from the county. Under expenditures, under salary, major expenditures on salaries, it reflects a 2% salary schedule increase for '15-16 and no schedule increase for '16-17. And assumed a 1.5% performance bonus for eligible employees. That 1.5%, we receive a state grant or state funds for this. And last year, the percentage was about 2%. But the current estimate for this year is about 1.5%. So the, there's a pot of money at the state, about $30 million. And so because the distribution of that has changed a little bit from last year to this year, it results, is a negative change for us because we're projected to get a little less, about a half percent less than what we received last year. Under benefits, our health insurance, we know that the premium will not change for '15-16. I am projecting a 5% increase in '16-17. And I will tell you that that's really just a guess because the trend's about 11%. And it's been about 11%. But for the last three years, we've had no increase in our premium. So we're not following trend. And so the 5% was my way of saying that I don't think this can last forever. Same time, I don't know what it is. But I'm showing about half of, or a little less than half of what the trend would be. So I'm just kind of being hopeful here. Under the non, what I'm referring... Under the non, what I'm referring to is non-personnel expenses and non-controllable like property insurance and utilities and so forth, we're basing that again on the current trends and best information we have. And then on the, I refer to as the controllable non-personnel expenses such as supplies and travel, it's flatlined from last year. And this is a detail of the revenue for the, now this is for the general fund and the referendum fund. And so it's a two-page report, but you can see the property tax information for the referendum and then the basic grant is the big portion of revenue for the general fund. So we have a total general fund and referendum fund budget of $108,240,050. Then we have a summary of the statement of appropriations and this is in object code orders, so it's by major categories like salary and benefits and so forth. And you see to the far right that our salary portion is 71%. Our benefit portion is just over 22%, about 4% in purchased services. And this is everything from pupil services and legal services to the major portion of this is utilities. And then supplies, about a little over 2%. And then we have a couple of other small items for fixed assets and other, just general other expenditures to get to 100% of the budget. Then, so now for 2015, we're starting with a cash balance of nine point, a little over 9.2 million. We have revenues of 104.8 million, anticipated expenditures of 106, a little over 106 million and a projected balance at the end of this calendar year of just over $8 million. Now I'll stop here for a second because you can see that our balance is, we're showing it dropping. I do anticipate it will drop some, but you should be aware that when we put the budget together, I'm being liberal perhaps on the expenditure side in the context of 100 and some million dollars because we have, excuse me, we have sufficient cash that to try to get this too close and then if we don't have enough appropriation, we have to go through a whole process of advertising and having hearings and so forth in order to appropriate and therefore be able to use the money that we already have in hand. So in the end, we're not going to, you know, we're not going to spend any more than we need to. But I would expect that our appropriation may be a little more. I think we may be a little short this year in terms of the cash balance dropping, but I wouldn't anticipate it dropping as much as it's showing here. And of course, if that referendum revenue comes in higher, which we hope it does and if the enrollment is higher, both of those would have positive impact on the revenue side, which would bring these two numbers closer together as well. Okay, then this is for 2016. So you can see that trend continuing based on this so that by the time we get through 16, we'd be down to six, about $6.8 million, which is a little lower than we'd want our minimum to be. I would want it to, we really like it to be not less than 8%, which is what virtually all the state agencies recommend. There was a time where we had as a goal to have 6%, but that was when we had about 2%. So 6 was pretty ambitious at the time. So I would really want this to be closer to the 8%. So it's something we certainly will, you know, be very watchful of and monitor as we go along. Now the transportation fund, there's also a formula for that fund and so we've basically used that. And then our excise and financial institution tax is based on latest estimates as well. You'll see similar assumptions in these other funds where there's salaries involved. We projected an increase of approximately 2% and we've increased, we did not increase the non-personnel, except in those areas that we could not control, then those would be based on current trends. So in summary here, we have a, we had a cash balance of just over 140 million on January 1st. As we go through this, we're projecting an increase in the balance in the transportation fund. That's largely due to favorable prices on fuel that we're getting right now and that's projected in this budget to continue. So, and we would want to build a bit of a cash balance here because as the fuel was going up, we also used some cash balance. And so now we're hoping to recover in this fund a bit. Bus replacement fund, it's going, the revenue is based on the latest estimates of property tax and we're assuming to replace 16 buses. And likewise, we, this would show some minimal cash balance at the end of 2016 as well. And our debt service fund, it's pretty straightforward. We have five different debts. Four of those are through a building, holding corporation or building corporation. And then we have, actually have two general obligation bonds and you recall, we issued bonds in 2014, then again, just this year in 2015. And so here, you can see we end up by the end of 2016 with a cash balance just over $8 million. We're in a bit of a transition relative to the operating balance that's permissible in the debt service fund. Until very recently, we were permitted to carry a six-month operating balance. We make payments twice a year and so the statute provided that we would have enough, half a year of payments basically. And the one reason they do that is because they want to really make sure that we're in a cash position to make those payments that perhaps are January 1 of the very beginning of the year. Because if we should not make those payments, in Indiana, the liability falls back to the state. So that's one of the underlying reasons why that balance is permitted and should, because in the case of bonds and bondholders, you can't be late making those million, multimillion dollar payments. And so however, there's some new laws now that for new debts such as the general obligation bonds, it's no longer 50%, it's like 20%. So we have a mixture of the two and thus, and that's what drives finally the cash balance at the end of the year. And then we have some, then in the CPF, you can see this is some general information in terms of the number of facilities, amount of square footage. You see we have almost 3 million square feet of space and just over 700 acres of property with an insured value of 441,788,031. And under the law, we must establish, you must establish a three-year capital projects fund plan, which we do. We currently have a tax rate of almost 22 cents and a maximum levy that share of $14,534,828. And I would emphasize on the CPF, the first year is the one that really matters and because that is the year that we're actually, ultimately, we're actually going to establish a tax rate and collect money and so forth. So in years two and three, as with any plan, they are subject to change. The whole thing is subject to change, but in the second and third year, we've not yet collected money for those years. So in those two years, if the projects change, we haven't actually established a tax rate yet. So we show that, but invariably they, the second and third year will likely change by the time we get there. Here again, on the revenue side, these are based on latest estimates. You can see at the bottom, the projected revenue for the three years and that runs from 15.7 million and by the third year, it's up to about 17. That gradually increases because now we're assuming the assessed value will go up some as we're, you know, moving out of the recession. So here, we start with a cash balance of $160,000. If you see at the bottom, by the end of 2016, we're showing a cash balance of $2.5 million. Now the reason it's 2.5 is when you see the detail in the budget guide, in this plan, we are showing money under future projects. And so what that means is, is that we will collect that money, but we will not appropriate it. And so we're not planning on spending it. We wouldn't plan on spending it until we would appropriate it and thus it will accumulate as cash. You'll also notice if you compare these numbers that when you see the detail of the capital projects fund plan, that the 2016 year is really inflated. And that was one, a question that Pam had. And when we advertise our budgets, we always inflate them. And the reason I do is because whatever we advertise, that's the maximum amount of money that we can receive. And so it's a protective measure in the case there was any mistakes or if the assessed value goes up and we could have received more money because of a tax rate, we want to be sure we receive all the money that we're entitled to. So that first year is always inflated for that reason because we know that they can reduce it. In fact, they will reduce it, but they cannot increase it. So it's really, it's really a protective measure, but in looking at all this information, it can get a bit confusing if you didn't have some of that background. It may be confusing even if you have it, but that is the case as you compare some of this PowerPoint with some of the budget forms themselves that will eventually turn into the state. Now what happened? Maybe that's the end. Okay. All right. Now with that, I'll try to respond to questions that you might hit.
Great. Thank you very much, Roger. I know we will have an opportunity tonight to ask questions. We will have an opportunity at the future hearing to ask questions and then in between time, sending emails and getting responses that way as well. So I just want the board to know this is not our only opportunity. And moving forward with that, let's open the floor for questions. Tricia?
I just actually have one basic question. It seemed, if I can remember correctly, in the past, in the PowerPoint, we were typically given some of the bigger capital projects.
Yes, you were. And we don't have any this evening because there aren't any.
There you go.
And the rest of the story on the future projects is, is that I've reserved, well really what you're seeing is reflected in the fact that we sold the general obligation bonds. So we sold those bonds and we did some catching up that we needed to do, but we also sold bonds this year, which permitted us to do things that, some of the things in those bond issues would have been done in cash through our capital fund. So now that money is showing up in our plan as a future project and one of the possible future projects will be, we're kind of positioning ourselves that whatever might come out of our strategic plan, you know, there's been a lot of conversation there about technology, for example. And so we're really trying to be in a position that if we found a need for additional purchases such as technology would be the one that comes to my mind, we'll be in a position to do that. And of course, if we don't, then you'll begin to see those, see that money appropriated for other capital needs. And so whether it's technology or other facility needs, we will make good use of the money, but at this point, I'm not trying to, you know, anticipate how, the end result of the strategic plan, but I know that that's out there and I know that part of that is focused on, a big part of it's focused on technology and the use of it and so forth. And so we're, that's really what you're saying, but that's also why there are not any identified major projects out of its capital fund this year.
That makes sense. Thanks.
I just want to let the audience know as well as confirm with the board, any of those appropriations, those will go through the board before any dollars are spent. We have the funds, we've not appropriated them at this time.
Yes.
We just have this balance that we are holding on to for future activities, but it won't be spent without board approval.
No, in fact, we, the appropriation process is what gives us the authority to spend the money. That's why, that's why we established a budget in the first place because really the budgeting process is what ultimately gives the authority to spend the money. And of course, you have, you have approved those appropriations or they wouldn't have been established in the first place.
Pam?
Yes. Could you go back over the explanation of what money can be spent out of CPF for utilities?
Yes.
Percentage? And does that include the general fund budget and the referendum budget put together or is it just the general fund?
Okay, in 2000, probably about 2004 or '05, when money then was very tight as well, the state passed legislation which allowed, I believe initially about 1%
Right.
Of things such as utility budgets were the large one, but also it could be insurance budget like, or insurance expenses like property and casualty insurance, but 1% of the budget. Then that 1% grew to 3.5% by 2007 and then it was frozen. And so, and it's 3.5%, it was 3.5% of the general fund. So to answer one question, it has nothing to do with the referendum fund. It was, it was a general fund and at that time, the fund was about 70, a little less than 75 million, I believe. And so 3.5% of that was about 2.5 million. And so that number got frozen in our capital fund and so that amount of money can be used to pay, we use it to pay a portion of our utilities. Now our utilities are more like 4 million or so rather than 2.5, so it certainly doesn't pay all of them. And since that's been frozen since then, any increase to our utilities then falls, does fall to the general fund or the referendum fund again from, it doesn't really matter in that sense. But so, so there's about 2.5 million dollars in the capital fund that we can use for, and do use for utilities. There's been some conversation about that expiring and so now they're putting forth legislation that would maintain that because it has had an ending date. And what they've done since 2007 is they keep extending the date, but it kind of worries people like me that someday they won't do that. So there's effort being put forward to change that so to become a permanent part of the CPF and we won't have to wonder if it's going to be extended.
Okay. So that means that despite the fact that the money in the general fund keeps increasing.
Yes.
The money out of CPF does not increase.
That's right.
Now, the new law, will that, will that change or are they going to continue to keep it at the 2007 level?
I don't know. My understanding of the intent is to keep it, just to keep it, you know, not lose it altogether. So I think the focus is, that's the primary focus is not losing what's already there. Perhaps more, I mean, everybody would, might support the notion of it being increased, but they definitely don't want it to be decreased.
No, but it would be nice if it stayed with, along with the money that we have in the general fund that keeps increasing and this amount that we get to take out does not increase.
Right. And what that conversation will result in is if it increases as the utilities increase, where that's in conflict is, is that the rate for the, the way the CPF is controlled is with a maximum rate. So that rate doesn't change, but if the assessed value goes up, we receive more money because same rate applied to a larger amount gives you more money. If they did permit that to go up, then we would need to make the decision between the need or the desire to increase that line item in that budget as compared to other capital needs, whether it be technology or facility needs or whatever, but it would give us a choice. Right now, we don't have a choice. It's just that's the amount and we take that amount, but we do not have a choice.
It would reduce the draw on the general fund.
Right. And if we, and if it was moved closer to a local decision, that's the kind of discussion we would have is, do we want to alleviate the general fund as those increases go up and thereby decrease maybe? and thereby decrease maybe other capital expenses?
Right.
But it, but it would be local control or local decision, as, you know, what's our priorities and how do we want to spend the money? Right now, the state tells us how, how much we can spend, at least for this.
Other questions? Well, fantastic. Roger, thank you for providing detailed responses to some of our questions throughout the weekend.
You're welcome. You mentioned the calendar a bit. The actual calendar, throw things all over the place, but it is included in your, in your budget packet, but as you alluded to, we will, at our next action item here, I will, will ask you to authorize us to advertise for a hearing for these budgets. And so we will do that on September the 10th, and then, if you approve that, and then we would proceed to have a public hearing on September the 28th. Still no action, other than the hearing, to get public input. And then on October the 26th, we would finally ask you to adopt these budgets. So as you alluded to, you'll see this two or three more times, and we'll, we'll not finally take action on it until October the 29th, and then we will submit it to the state shortly thereafter, and then it will go for review with the Department of Local Government Finance. And finally, in sometime after the first of the year, the state will finally approve. So you approve it to submit it to the state, but in the end, it's, it's the state that does the final approval, which sets the tax rates in motion and so forth, which will receive that sometime the first of the year. I would note that since this is a calendar year budget, we generally are starting, we are starting the expenditures on January 1st, and in recent years, the budget's not approved at that point. So seems a little odd, and it is. And then about April, we will be told by the state how much the budget that they have approved has been cut in the CPF as a result of the circuit breaker. So, so of course, we anticipate that, but that, that is the process. They will approve our, our Capital Projects Fund, and in April, they will inform us that they're going to cut, this year, it was $611,000 out of that fund. And we won't know that until April, but we start spending the money in January. So you'd think there might be, might be a better system, but currently, that's what it is.
Thank you, Roger. Quick question on advertisement?
Yes.
Did the law change, or is that in discussion, about where we need to advertise for publications?
It has changed.
Or do we get to advertise now in the current?
Yeah, it has, I believe, it has changed. We, for years, it was in two, two different newspapers, one of which would have been in Novosel.
Okay. So now we just have, we, we can advertise only in our local Carmel paper?
That I'm not, I thought we did advertise in Novosel.
We've been advertising in the Times.
In the Times.
So I have worked with the current, the permanent page.
We'd sort of use that. To answer your question, the law did change. It allowed for us to advertise locally.
Okay.
Correct.
Well, thank you. Then, moving right along, Roger, action items. Action item number one, permission to advertise.
No, we're beyond consent.
We didn't consent. We just watched the second report. That's okay. Do you need to know who approved consent? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. If you're ready to proceed, I'm ready. Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah. Yes, this first one is, is permission to advertise these budgets and our CPF plan, our bus replacement plan. And then we would have the hearing in September.
May I get a motion on the table to approve or to, to give permission to advertise for the public hearing for the 2016 budgets, the 2016 through '18 CPF plan, and the 12-year bus replacement plan?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we have resolutions for retirement program.
Okay, because the system's, and I don't have the detail on that, but essentially, what this is about is there are resolutions in your packet that we need to have approved as we are, we are moving all non-teacher employees from, in our retirement program, from annuities, from an annuity platform to mutual fund platform. And this is some of the documentation and paperwork necessary to accomplish that move.
Thank you, Roger. May I get a motion on the table to approve the resolutions for the retirement programs? Second?
Second.
Discussion? Well, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. There you go. Next, we have our bid awards for the Carmel High School Musical Instruments, and to that, we look to Roger.
Thank you. Here, we're recommending the board award bids for musical instruments to Pages Music in the amount of $497,544.04. These instruments are, and there's a detailed listing included in the report, these instruments are replacing instruments at Carmel High School. Most of the instruments were purchased either in 2000, in 2005 or before, and they have reached their useful life. We solicited from four vendors, but received response only from one, and that was Pages. The response was actually below the, the original estimate, and these instruments will be purchased from our Capital Projects Fund.
Thank you, Roger. May I get a motion on the table to approve the bid award to Pages Music for the Carmel High School Musical Instruments?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? Yes.
I think our music program is awesome, so what we can do to help those youngsters get along, I mean, these are huge instruments and well worth it. I'm so glad our community's able to continue our, performing ours.
Thank you, Kathy. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving right along, we have our donations of stocks. Roger?
Thank you. We have, occasionally, we have patrons who would like to donate stock to the school corporation, and that helps them with their taxes and so forth. But in order to do that, we need, the financial institutions tell us that the board needs to grant authority, and the recommendation would be, that authority would be either to myself or David Stowers, our deputy treasurer, to open an investment account to receive those stocks. And then we, after receiving the stocks, then we would typically cash those in, and then we'd have cash and, for whatever the gift was intended for. So it becomes a part of that requirement in order to accept stocks as a donation.
Thank you, Roger. May I get a motion on the table to accept these donated stocks?
Well, we're not accepting the stocks. What we're doing is, is giving, providing authorization that we will then provide to the financial institutions that would receive the stocks, or we would receive them and put them in a brokerage or in an account.
Okay.
And then, when we, if and when we receive donated stocks. I think it started because somebody wanted to donate stocks, and then we found out.
So this would be open-ended, not just for one set?
Exactly. Yeah, we had, we had an individual that wants to donate stocks, and we found that there was no way they really could, absent this authority from the board to receive them in the first place.
Oh, I understand. Okay, thank you.
I, I'll make a motion.
Please.
I move that we grant authority to the treasurer and deputy treasurer to set up an account for us to receive stocks as gifts to the corporation.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Yes.
How does that, if someone gives money to the school in terms of a stock, how does that show up in our budget as, what fund does that go into? And how to gift, I mean, I don't know how you handle this.
Yeah, we have, we have a gift, there's a gift fund, and that's designated by the state, a certain number and so forth. And all the donations of cash, at least, are, that, that money goes to the gift fund and, and is in a specific account for, specific to whatever the gift was for.
If somebody should give a large amount, would you hold on to that for any particular? I'm upset that we have now a, you know, market correction, it's just popped up, that I'd hate to see us, you know, sell today.
Well, again, what would happen here is, is that we would have to make that decision, but honestly, we likely would, and of course, whoever's giving us, they would have some, you know, that might affect when they gave it to us. They might want to give it to us when the, when the market's low, because if that represented a loss for them, then, then part of that gift would be written off as a, as a loss. That's where, that's why, there are some people that would prefer to give stocks rather than cash, because it impacts their tax liability. Once we receive it, then, we probably, we would intend really to sell it, because I don't think we want to get into the business of kind of playing the stock market, based on a gift. If they give us stock that today's worth $2,000 to do something that costs $2,000, you know, we could hold on to the money and then lose the $2,000, wouldn't be able to fulfill the intent of the gift. On the other hand, if it jumped to $4,000, we could do better, but, but our, the assumption I made is that we likely would sell the stock almost as soon as we received it.
Okay. Pam?
Yes. Are we notified when we get a gift like that? I know we get a list of gifts, you know, in our agenda.
Yeah, and that's when you're notified. Because under state law, any gift to the school corporation has to be accepted by the board, thus.
So have we received any of these in the past?
No.
Oh, so this is all new?
Would be, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, you'll still see if we get them, the actual gift to
Right.
the district and what amount.
Right.
Okay, and so a lot of these, some of these gifts won't be given for a specific purpose, but to be used as we see fit?
Well, I don't know. That would depend on the, on the donor. I think what you're, maybe headed toward is what more typically might end up a gift to an educational foundation. I believe here, what, again, we haven't seen any so far, but again, we had an individual that came and said, it started out, we would, I'd like to donate stocks, and then we found that we can't receive them absent this action. So, so we've not actually received stock in the past, but, but I'm assuming that this would be a gift more typical of what you see in your board report, in that we're giving stock, but it's for a certain purpose, and we're really giving you that in lieu of cash. If they were wanting to, you know, bequeath a larger amount of money from an estate or something like that, I'm sure we would welcome the gift, but where I've seen that is typically directed to like the educational foundation, because there, then it is used for, over time, and as compared to the, typically, the gifts we're getting are specific for, you know, a specific purpose, and they're not, relatively speaking, they're not like hundreds of thousands of dollars, or, you know, very much appreciated, but not that type of gift.
So if, if we receive the stock and we have to turn it into cash, isn't there a fee for the sale of the stock?
Well, it would depend, but that would all go into this. I really think what would happen is, or what will happen if somebody wants to donate stock, is they'll know what the stock's valued at when they give it. And so, and they'll, we'll know that, and they'll know that, and they'll have a specific purpose, just like they do routinely when they give us cash, except in this case, it would be somebody that feels that it's in their best interest to make the donation in the form of stock rather than cash. Again, it goes back to their tax liability.
Thank you. Tricia?
Have you come across, how common is this? Have you talked with other districts, or is this just because this came up in this situation, or?
It really came up in this situation, as I said, in at least the last 20 years, nobody's wanted to give us stock.
Darn it.
So.
But we would.
So I don't think it's all that common, is what I'm saying.
Any other questions? Comments? Mike?
Have we thought about who we'd be opening that account with? What brokerage firm, or?
No, because I think, we're seeing it as just kind of in and out. And so we've talked to Huntington Bank, because that's the bank that we use for all, currently for the district's finances.
Thank you. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now, Dr. Wall, the floor is yours.
As we did last year, we suggested topics for the workshops for this coming year, and in August, we already, you already did an excellent job discussing the legislative priorities for 1516. And we proposed topics for the other workshops for 1516. It's an overlay of things we've done last year, for, in other words, things in progress. For instance, AP Capstone, Middle School Program Progress Report, Teacher Evaluation Update, those are things that have been ongoing and part of our action plan going forward this year, as well as new initiatives going forward that are consistent with our strategic plan and action plan, High Ability Program Evaluation Report, Professional Development Evaluation Report. Then March and April, very interesting, these are very definitive goals in our action plan, directly connected to Strategic Plan and Advanced Ed Report, Ensuring the Academic Growth of All Students. We're suggesting doing that in two parts. Part one in March, Interventions in World Class Instructional Design and Assessment, the WEDA Can Do Standards, and I'll let Amy speak to that in more detail in a minute. And then April, Ensuring the Academic Growth of All Students, Part Two. We're putting some serious energy and focus into our 18 to 22-year-olds at the Carmel Learning Center, as we look at those students emerging from, hopefully, from independent living situations to competitive employment, to supported employment, whatever it may be, and again, ensuring the academic success of both ends of the spectrum in between on those, on those groups that may be underperforming right now. And then in June, Integrating Technology in Daily Instruction, we believe that's a very strong initiative, as Roger talked about in his budget report, as we look at a district integration, technology integration plan for Carmel Clay Schools. So those are the suggested topics, subject to change as needs may arise, or interests may change, from the board or from suggestions from administration, but it gives us a nice roadmap for the year, as we go into the workshop topics, connected to our strategic plan and action plan, so there's continuity and connection. So those are the suggestions going forward for the workshops.
Great. Amy, do you want to speak to the WEDA at this point?
Yeah, would you, Amy?
Before we jump into questions? Or are you?
Yes, and just very briefly, the WEDA Can Do Strategies is, it's, WEDA is actually a consortium that the state of Indiana works with, and many other states do as well. And they have a lot of different components with it, but the one component, the actual standards, the Can Do Standards, they work with our, as we look at our students that are English learners. But those standards are, a lot of those are very best practices for all students and all learners. And so really, to illustrate, what are we doing for our English language learners? What are we doing also for our students that are low achieving? What interventions do we have in place? What are we doing for our students that are twice exceptional? And so to really illustrate all of those pieces, how are we meeting the needs of all of our students in that workshop topic?
Oh, great. Okay, let's open this up to the floor. Pam?
I just have a comment. I've been reading a lot lately, as you all well know. Well, you know, I try to stay on top of everything. But they've been talking a lot about the integration of technology into daily instruction, but it's also along with the arts, and how the arts make people more creative and help them be better in technology. And so I'm wondering if, if we're, if we might look at, at that aspect as well, making sure our students have access to the arts, and, because this is- our students have access to the arts, and, because this is, this has become a very big topic right now.
Yeah, clearly, they, our students in Carmel Clay Schools have access, but the STEM movement is starting to transverse into STEAM, science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. So I've followed that as well, so it is very intriguing. I don't know how they are measuring that or assessing that, but I think it's quite interesting.
Yes.
There was an article, I think it was today, that I was reading in the ASBJ Journal, regarding technology and the arts, and integrating the two and bringing students into, making sure that the students are also having the art background if they're doing the technology.
It'd be interesting to see how this, we're going to have a committee, obviously, take a look at this, and if that becomes part of the recommendation of the committee.
Other questions or comments?
I just have one quick comment, and I just, I guess a little kudos, because I think this is, I like how you all lay this out and then present it to us all upfront, so we have this to look at, so thanks.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you.
A couple of comments that I wanted to go through, and I had looked at our strategic plan and balancing what we've discussed at agenda meetings and what have you for our workshop topics. I just want to make sure we're all aware that just because it's not listed as a workshop topic doesn't preclude us from having reports on a number of other things.
Correct.
You know, our LMS system that we're looking at, our community outreach, and how we're engaging the students and businesses.
Right.
Flexibility with our scheduling, in addition to our social-emotional learning measures. That's a big, big one.
Right. These are suggested topics that, it's a good point, Leila. We will have reports, just like we did last year, just like we're having this evening, throughout the year on all initiatives, and you hit the, you hit the high ones, the LMS, the SCL. Look for reports throughout the year as well, in addition to the monthly updates.
Just one more question. The teacher evaluation update, we have put the interim plan into place for this year because we were going to do that, is that correct?
Yes, we did, from the committee's recommendation. That was in place.
Yes.
Last year, and it is in place for this year, status quo from last.
Okay.
Reflecting the changes and suggestions from the committee.
Any other questions? Wonderful. Thank you very much, Dr. Wall.
Thank you.
Board member?
Can I just interject, just a little bit more under my report, please? We recently were made aware of some legislative changes that were tacked onto the budget bill, and I'm learning, this is a very common biennial budget bill practice, and in, in some of them, they've added four additional topics that can be, that are part of discussion with the association, and I'll just go through them. Pre-evaluation planning session required under the law, and in essence, I'll be giving the principles of pre-evaluation sessions, stating that where they left off last year with the evaluation is where they're going to start this year, same process, and review the rise timeline of, that's part of discussion tomorrow, actually, with the association. Staff performance evaluation report, that's new. You'll actually get that report from me in September. This thing came out really kind of like how the Colts left Baltimore, in the middle of the night, no one knew it. And so, the report's supposed to be by August 15th, no one can meet that deadline, and many districts won't be able to at all, because they won't have final assessments from ISTEAP, you know, and we can't complete our school improvement planning until we get ISTEAP. So Amy and I talked about that, and we may talk a little bit more about that tonight, but that's the gist of the ISTEAP thing, too. So you'll get a report from me in September, and I'll give it to the principals in September. There's also a new one called Funding for a Plan for Remediation Program for any subset of students enrolled in kindergarten through 12, grade 12. We believe that means any type of funding used for remediation programs for our students, which will give that, that'll be discussable with the association as well. And they have put performance grants into a discussable.
No.
Not a bargainable, but a discussable. So we'll have that discussion with the association as well. And again, we've, we talked about these last Thursday with my monthly meeting with the association leadership. It'll be in discussion, formal big D discussion tomorrow, and I just wanted to just give the board a heads up. Those things just kind of walked in, and David Day and I talked about it last week, and it just got tacked on the budget bill, so. We like a little more transparency than that, as we've displayed. So that kind of hits it for ISTEAP, Amy, don't you think, the conundrum with ISTEAP?
Really about 2017.
Well, what's our best guess about?
Well, yes, I mean, the state would say still possibly October, but it's not, I mean, the cut scores are not even going to be set until October at this point, so hopefully January, but we'll see, because I think that's still pretty lofty goal.
I think you're right.
Do we use ISTEAP scores as part of our evaluation process?
Well, we use.
I mean, I know some schools do, I don't know if we do.
Right. We use the school grade, the district grade as part of our, currently as part of our evaluation, and so it will affect, depending on what the state does with grading districts and schools, and then also depending on what the state does with, I mean, because a big part of that school grade is the growth model, which is just a whole nother piece, because you're looking at different standards now. I mean, there's just so many different moving parts here. But yes, as you're correct, in many schools are waiting for those to finalize their teacher evaluation.
Right.
Other questions?
I do have a quick question for you, Dr. Wall. The four items that you've listed, did I hear you correctly to say those are all part of discussion now?
Those are all discussables, correct.
Discussables, okay.
Correct.
This funding for a plan for remediation, can you give me any more detail on that?
Based upon what we can discern from that, we get some money for remediation, credit recovery, and give me something else.
Credit recovery, ECA, IREDA, for students that have to pass the ECA, we do remediation there. For students, obviously, that have to pass IREDA in third grade, we do remediation. The funds are very small. We see like $8,000, and then we receive another one for $10,000. So they're very small funds.
Thank you. Any other questions? Wonderful, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you have any board reports that we have for this evening? Moving right along. Meeting adjourned.